Good evening and welcome to the Wilson Central School District Board of Education meeting, Tuesday, May 24th, 2022. My name is Tim Carter, Superintendent of Schools. If you're watching this video, it is not being livestreamed because we were just, our board meeting was displaced because of concert, the middle school vocal concert tonight. So this will blow up on the website after the fact if you're not live. And if you have any comments, questions, or concerns, please don't hesitate to call, 751-9399, and that's Mrs. Levon, our district clerk's number, and she'll get whatever message to the board or answer your questions for you. At this time, I will turn the board meeting over to President Waters.
Thank you Superintendent Carter. Please stand.
To the flag, our United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under 1B, Board Members, approved meeting minutes stated May 10, 2022. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Superintendent Carter, your policy review.
Thank you President Waters. We have three policies to bring to your attention, and all three of these policies were reviewed by our shared, District Shared Decision Making Team, which not only includes myself, trustee DuR, and trustee Kent are part of this review. So the first one is Policy 3211, Community Relations, the Use of Assistant App Animals. Again, this particular policy delineates what is a service animal, what is an assistance animal, and how they can be used in the building with permission. There's a current policy, so you can see that anything in blue is added to the policy. So they changed the name of the policy from Use of Service Animals to Use of Assistance Animals, which includes service animals, therapy dogs. So anything around therapy dogs, starting on page two, all of that is brand new. Again, all of this is, the biggest difference is that if it is a service animal, it would have to be listed on a child's IEP for that service animal, or 504 plan for that service animal to be able to be brought into school. And I think in our conversation, the other difference is the handler of the service dog would be the student, not necessarily another person, where a therapy dog would have to come in with a handler. Board Members, this policy was in party in your packet that went to you on Friday. This is our first read. Are there any questions about Policy 3211? There were three policies that were sent to us. Part of our policy service's job is to deal with items and issues that are going on around the nation, and items and issues that are going around our state. So our policy service, which is Erie One Bosne's Legal Department, had been become aware of there's a lot of challenging, challenges by parents and community groups of curriculum material, library material, based upon its content. And every school district in New York State has a policy on how a community member or a parent can challenge material. And honestly, it was pretty out of date. So our policy committee, knowing that it could become a problem in Western New York school districts, went through and reviewed, changed, made changes to three policies. One, Curriculum Development Resources, and objections to instructional material and controversial issue. There was a third one that we tabled because there were some things that we didn't understand, and we don't want to move it forward to the board until the committee understood exactly what it was about, too. So there'll be a third one coming up at another time, probably next month. So the first one is Policy 8110, Under Instruction. Basically, you can see the entire policy was crossed out, and they started over. They started over on the second page, in which they began talking about the Board Regents in New York State Department of Education, or NYSED, are responsible for setting state learning standards for what all students should know and be able to do as a result of skilled instruction. The district must provide students with instruction to certain specific specified topics, as outlined in law, regulation, and guidance, develop curriculum based upon established state learning standards, law, regulation, and guidance. It defines curriculum instruction and state learning standards, and goes into how the district, you know, it's a broad strokes on how the district develops, purchases resources, and evaluates the district's curriculum. First, we have to put it in place. That's the process by why we have, what we talked about, continuing that curriculum and AIS position for the future, was to help with this process of evaluating and developing our curriculum. I believe it was, you see it's on the third page, and again, it just keeps going, and you recommend some changes. So this just puts into a process, you know, what, how the curriculum's developed, and what, how resources are purchased and adjusted for the curriculum, and how, yeah, and then evaluation of that curriculum. Board Member, do you have any questions about Page 110? The last one is objections to controversial instructional material and controversial issues. Again, if you take a look at the red, that's what the policy looked like as of 2018, and they crossed out the entire thing and started over in blue. Definition of what a controversial issue is, what instructional material is, what library materials are, and what textbooks are. The board recognizes the right of the district community members to voice concerns and objections about instructional material and a discussion of controversial issues. This policy addresses how those concerns and objections can be raised. So it sort of establishes a boundaries for the process and how the process happens. That's all the way down to, you know, the community members have, if they have questions and current concerns about instructional material, they're encouraged to bring those questions and concerns to instruction staff, the school libraries, media specialists. If they have, if they still have concerns and wish to formally object, there is a form that they can put in, and a committee process that will be put in place of the building principal, the library, possibly the classroom teacher if it's a textbook, and they would review it and make a determination of whether that, that piece of material is appropriate to be put in, left in school or not, based upon the community members' concern. You can see that's where the appeal process, honestly, the final appeal is, could be to the Board of Education for action. You know, we've had, even my short time here, my five years here, we've had someone bring up a text, and we've taken a look at it and decided, you know, by, between the library media specialist and the building principal, well, maybe that went out of circulation for a little while, based upon the concern that we brought. Or maybe it's moved, oh, we had one that was moved, it's more the middle school content, so we moved it up to the middle school. That was the example that was used most recently. Controversial issues, that policy pretty much just states that, you know, our job as educators is to give the facts and nothing but the facts, and not the opinions behind the facts. And as educators, it's our job to stay neutral. And if we're bringing guest speakers in to discuss a particular topic, we have to make sure that we show both sides of the issue, not just what our own personal beliefs are. And that's how the whole controversial issue section kind of goes. If you had a chance to take a look at it, if you have questions, I'll take them now. This is our first read and our first review. Between now and the next board meeting, these are yours to keep. If it comes up as, you know, you take a look at it and you have a question, please hesitate to call me or email me, and I'll send that question with my response out into news and notes for everybody to see.
Question. Go ahead. Under objections to instructional material.
Yep.
A student may be able to be excused from instruction in very limited circumstances, outlined in the law and regulations. That's a pretty broad statement when you look at, there's nothing, do we have the laws and regulations in case a student objects to something that's being taught in a classroom?
In practical purposes, it's happened. We've had parents that objected to the content of what is being taught in a classroom. That student would be given an alternative assignment, an alternative location in order to get the work done. So it's happened, very limited. I don't know what the laws and regulations are.
I was just questioning that.
It's more of putting a policy in place, you know, I've not had a student themselves say that they want to sit in a class for a particular reason, but it has occurred with parents. I can think of, I mean, a very small hand fight, I less, I can think of two cases in the last couple of years where a parent had called and said, I really don't want my child to be part of that conversation. And the lesson still went on, and that child was given an alternative assignment and a location.
I know years ago, we had an instance, as far as, I'm trying to say the right words. It was an educational class on sexual education, I guess that's what you call it, that they went into, renewed in the district, and there was quite a bit of objection by two families. And this was all of them.
I mean, the, you know, there's, even in other districts, there are parents that would rather not have that conversation being made at school, they'd rather have that at home. And I don't know the situation that I've ever been in with a district who would force a child to sit through that conversation. You know, if the parent is not comfortable, again, that's where the limited circumstances are. You're not going to miss the entire, they're not going to miss the entire course, you're not sitting out of the course. But when those conversations are going on, you're going to go to a separate location and have a separate assignment to do. I hope that answered your question. Board Members, any other questions? Again, like I said, if you are home and you happen to take a look at this and a question comes up, please don't hesitate to let me know. Those are the three policies.
Thank you Superintendent Carter. They will be on our agenda for approval. Under 3 personnel resignations, A, a long resignation of Teresa Claire, laborer previously approved in February 2022, 20, February 2020, 2022, 2022. You did that. Her question, Mrs. Levon. Board meeting from effective August 1, 2022, to effective July 29, 2022. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Carter. Under 4 personnel appointments before I call for a motion, Mr. Carter.
Good evening Board Members. Thank you for letting me introduce Nicholas Truber. Nick is a lifelong resident of the area and a Wilson graduate. During the interview process, Nick showed us that he has characteristics that won in Hawaii. Many references spoke to about Nick said that he's responsible for punctual, hardworking, and willing to learn. He's clearly shown that the opportunity to become part of the Wilson School District is something he's very excited about, and we feel with the board's approval that Nick will have a very long, successful career at the district.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Under 4 personnel appointments, A, Nicholas Truber is full-time labor effective June 6, 2022, chaplain, 7, Step 1, with benefits for the CSCA agreement pending New York State Fingerpoint Clearance. Can I have a question?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, welcome. Under B, approved substitute teacher, Emma Stack, substitute teacher has met New York State Fingerpoint Clearance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Under 5, other, except the results of the May 17, 2022 Annual Meeting and Election. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. I'd like to congratulate trustee Stewart and newly-elected trustee Wilson, and appreciate any of the district residents that did come on, take the time to vote, and make their voices heard. I really appreciate that. Under B, approved date change for the boardwork session currently scheduled for June 28, 2022, at 7:00. The proposed date is Tuesday, June 21, 2022, at 7:00 o'clock. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item C, approved revised corrective action plan for the Office of State Controller's Audit. Can I have a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item D, approved contract between Wilson Central School District and DMS Productions to assist with signing for the 2021-2022 Jazz Agreement. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. I guess I certainly want to encourage attendance at that somewhat unique event that's put on, it's always great. Item D, approved contract between Wilson Central School District and AVEANNA Healthcare to provide healthcare services to students at the school. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item F, approved Wilson Teachers Association donation of a cherry blossom tree and mark buried memory of Tracy Palmeri, to be planted on the school grounds and located south from middle school entrance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. If there is, the date of that will be June 14?
Yes.
At 2:30?
Correct.
If anybody would like to attend. Item G, approved the creation of label club as an extra club. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We've already done our policy reviews. They are, I'm using this week, and then the, for approval, their first weekend, for approval in June. Under 7 conference requests, approved requests, B through Z, C, excuse me, May 24, 2022. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Superintendent Carter, do you have a report?
I do. Brother Waters, this report is from one of our special education teachers, Lisa Candino. She went to a training on FAPE, which is Free and Appropriate Education Compliance 2022, and had to help and implement IEPs by the National Business Institute. On May 12, she attended the FAPE Compliance 2022 Seminar via livestream. Two presenters were Timothy Gilzbach, an attorney specializing in the field of special education, and Todd Cockner, a family law attorney and mediator. The seminar broke into 10 topics, and two attorneys presented and discussed information on five topics each. The seminar reviewed and provided new information on how to develop legally defensive IEPs, individual education plans according to special education law. Program's purpose was to provide a better understanding of special education education and the rights that are provided to students under IDEA, Individual Disabilities Act. In Section 504, schools remaining compliant avoid further liability in this area. The attorneys also discussed the Individual and Individuals with Disabilities Act as it relates to writing IEPs correctly, and the importance of writing and implementing IEPs, they're compliant with special education law. The seminar was very informative, clearing up any lingering questions that she may have had about writing IEPs, but also confirmed her knowledge and long existing litigation in the area of special education, and informed her of new information to ensure that IEPs are in compliance and they need providing quality, appropriate education, they're compliant with IDEA in Section 504. She looks forward to sharing the information she has learned with her colleagues, and she intends to continue gathering new knowledge in the area so she can effectively serve as the students with disabilities that she works with, and assist educators in the special education department if necessary.
Thank you. Superintendent Carter. Under 9, Use of Facility, Request A, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Pretend this is informational only, there'll be no action. Trustee Stewart, do you have anything?
No.
Superintendent Carter, do you have reports?
Thank you President Waters. First of all, approximately 11:15, 11:30 this morning, a gunman entered the elementary school, robbed elementary school, involved the taxes, and a mass shooting occurred in which a number of people were injured, and 14 children, one teacher. This hits home for everyone, especially educators that work with our kids every single day, and try to provide a safe environment for them. I'd like to take a moment, a moment of silence for the entire Robb Elementary, and specifically Thank you. I want to congratulate the Board of Education and the Wilson School community on a successful budget vote, passing all four of its propositions, the budget proposition, the proposition of the two reserves, the technology reserve, and the repair reserve, and also a student, ex officio board member, which we're going to move forward with that process of bringing a school board member on for September, a student board member for September. And I want to formally congratulate the reelection of Kathy Stewart to the board, and look forward to welcoming Jason Wilson as a new board member. Mrs. Oliveri, myself, and Mrs. Levon will be meeting with Jason in the coming months, providing him with as much of the material as possible to get him up to speed on where we're at as it relates to items that the board deals with. Currently, our pre-K and kindergarten registration is going on, kindergarten screening is in process, and Board Members, you probably know from news and notes, we are offering two full-day opportunities of UPK for next year, one of them is located in the district at our Wilson Elementary School, and then the second one is at the Jill's Playyard location in Ransfield. And actually, Mrs. Oliveri and I and Mrs. Schoutz had the opportunity to go visit it yesterday, and it has been absolutely beautiful, beautiful setup. I know we didn't do a board tour this year, but it's something I know that if you keep reminding me, we'll get it set up for next year, and I'd like to make that one of the stops to see the, you know, the community-based UPK program also. As you saw, Board Members and community members, during this meeting, the board voted to move one of its work sessions to June 21st. The purpose of that June 21st change, we tend to not meet at the end of June because graduation is over, and for a few days, everybody disappears from the school, so we've not met. This particular June 21st, we moved it prior to graduation. We're going to advertise it as a public forum and invite the entire community, anyone in the community that wants to come in and have a conversation about school resource officer. We have invited the Niagara County Sheriff, Mike Filicetti, and Mike plans to be here. As of last email, he plans to be here and bring a panel of SROs to have that conversation, if anybody would like to have a conversation. It'll be a presentation, question and answer type format. Our June board meeting, which the date slips my mind right now, our next board meeting is June 14.
14.
June 14th, we'll also have our retirement reception, so that'll be the beginning parts of it, where the, we'll ask the administrators that work with the retirees to sample about the retirees. Those, I signed those invitation letters today, so they'll go out into the mail, and I think we're at 13 or 14, somewhere around 13 or 14 retirees this year, so we're at the buckle down for a long evening. Congratulations to Nick. I know he went back to work across the street. Soon he will have to go over to work across the street and be working with us every night, so congratulations to Nick. It was a great interview. When he came and met with me, he is extremely excited to begin a career here at Wilson. And as President Waters said, I had down to mention that June 14, at 2:30, there's going to be a memorial tree plantings and celebration of life for Tracy Palmeri. If anyone in the community or student, former student would like to join us, they're welcome. That message went out over the SOS page, and we'll continue to send that out until we get to the June 14th section. Board Members, do you have any questions? For you?
What was the date of the SRO?
21st.
Of June?
Yes. It's the, the board meeting switched. Just have to call out our board meeting. Yep. We'll be joining the board. Board chat.
We're going to find out the date.
June 8.
Thank you.
June 8, 6:00 PM.
It's definitely not on my calendar, but it's not showing up on this.
Something was more than. Great.
Thank you.
Okay. Wow, coming up.
Thank you Superintendent Carter. Certainly our thoughts and our prayers are with Wilson, we're affected in Texas, I just can't imagine. Tonight, I was completely mortified hearing that this afternoon. It's terrible. There's really nothing that you can say. I do want to make mention that, not that these tours anywhere near connected, but the state did announce today that they are canceling the 11th grade social studies exam, I believe it is, US History.
USHG.
And I guess, you know, there's some reasons that were given around that, and this really isn't appropriate to get on my soapbox in this, in this topic, but certainly there's, there's really a need for the state to look at not mandating regents to pull regents diplomas any longer. They've been looking for an excuse to cancel this exam, and I think they used a tragedy to do it. That's my whole personal opinion, not based on any facts that I'm aware of. Board members, do you have anything to add this evening? I'll open up for public phone. If anybody would like to address the board, please state your name and address prior and keep your comments brief. All right. We do have an executive session. There'll be no action after our executive session. Can I have a motion for executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? When executive session ends, we're coming.